Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, October 18th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup. Mr. Wetherspoon is absent.
Any requests?
Yeah, just like everybody to pray for my family, my uncle Larry Meredith, who you all know, was a city councilperson, attorney, has been in hospital for a couple of weeks. So I'll just leave that. If you guys would just pray for him and his family, his daughters.
I have to mention our sidekick, Mr. Wetherspoon. He's doing well, but he had a second surgery that he wasn't expecting to have. Otherwise, he'd be here with us tonight, and he is in spirit. I'm sure he's probably listening. So keep him in your prayers, Stu, because there's a lot of pain with that shoulder. Thank you.
And also like to add a moment of silence for every person who lost their life in the Middle East over the past couple of weeks. Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you allowed us to assemble ourselves in these chambers. We ask by the power of your help, you help us make good and prudent decisions on the behalf of the city and its residents. We ask that you look upon our councilmen and our former councilmen as they go through health struggles. We ask that you comfort all those who are in mourning at this time and that you look in on those who are the least fortunate and add a special blessing. Blessed is your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the October 4th, 2023 city council meeting and bills for payment on October 20th and October 27th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Nelson.
You have any repository sales today? Any repository sales? Any repository sales? Moving on to public comments?
Hello, my name's Art Leopold. Thank you for the opportunity, city councilmen and esteemed councils, gentle ladies, also Mr. Mayor, administration. It's not often I get the opportunity to come up and congratulate you guys because it seems like you're doing some good things. In particular, two items on the agenda. One would be the rental housing ordinance. I got so excited when I first heard that this was going to be brought up, and I like the ordinance in its current form. It can always be improved upon, but I think it's a good move. I was excited in particular because several years back in working with Marcus Atkinson, who was over at Serviery, we did some tenant landlord relations. And this is a giant leap forward, far as I'm concerned. And I hope you do pass it. It's final passage, and I think it'll be good for the city. Second of all would be the sidewalk ordinance. That's the one that I know. This is, let's see, Council File 16396. This is focusing on construction. I think we're making good efforts there. And I certainly do appreciate that. I'd be remiss, though, because I know there's, one of my good compadres, Freda, who's not here, would bring up these issues. Curve transitions, there's no mention, no detail. Curbs, signage, alternate service areas, and alternate routes, they're not really specified. Also, I didn't see any particular penalties that are issued within this. Maybe they leap over to another ordinance. That's great. But I think it's a good first step, and I applaud you for moving on it and looking to do something in this regard. The other thing, of course, it doesn't address the snow problem in the wintertime. And that's a big one, and Maz knows, the mayor knows, I'm always talking about this, other folks, is that when the plows jam that snow up on sidewalks, it's not a construction issue. It's just an ignorance issue, and that's something that we need to police more closely. So I want to applaud you. Seems to be all good news, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I forgot to specify if you could give your name and your municipality at the beginning. You don't have to give your address. I won't be enforcing that today, hoping to change it later this meeting.
Good evening. My name is Gary Kranajek. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Erie. So I'm here to talk to you about the rental ordinance. I think it's well intentioned. I kind of understand that. I think there was a nice parade of tenants that spoke of its need. I think in some cases, you know, it was emotionally tweaked a little bit to achieve the intended result. But I don't think this ordinance is going to do anything to reduce homelessness. I think it's more likely to reduce available residential housing in the city of Erie. So let's talk about the big picture investment, which I'm extremely pro-investment of in the city of Erie. Lived here my whole life, and myself and my wife own a few apartment units. On the one hand, you know, I could say that I don't think it's really going to affect me much. I haven't had an eviction in 10 or 15 years, and there's a bunch of reasons for that. But I think it's, you know, the quality of our units and our style isn't of a tenant. Our style is we have a customer. We're an owner, a business owner, and we treat the person occupying as a customer. Let's talk about the big picture. Property taxes in Erie total 3.7% of assessed value. That means in most years, you know, the taxes exceed the appreciation. They might have been different for a year or two. So it's a big disincentive. And people do what they do. They vote with their feet. They move their capital to adjacent suburbs with, because it's considered, you know, the right thing to do when you're up upperly mobile. The school district tax policy has been aggressive. I know I'm talking about a city council, but they've raised taxes every year. They're sitting at tens of millions of dollars of cash, but they're doing that. Doesn't, I know you don't control it, but that's just part of the big picture. Then we have things like rental registration. It's really well intentioned. In the beginning, I can remember how many smoke alarms were installed, and it's quite unfortunate if a property owner doesn't install them. I think it's just, you know, a terrible disservice for themselves. The exposure puts them to, and to their customer tenants. But rental registration increases the cost of doing business. Unresponsible owners, they ignore a lot of the rental registrations. They don't file, they don't pay, and if the box is checked noncompliant, BIU does nothing, which is, that's the impact of that ordinance, and I fear that this may have similar implications. But so be it. But anyway, the rental registration has a minimal impact on the quality and amount of investment. It didn't do what it was intended to do, I think, if you go back and look. Now, let's talk about the stormwater fee. I really think it's well intentioned. I don't, I didn't oppose it. It's just another cost of doing business and reason for people not to invest in the city of Erie. And then, of course, there's the maze of building, electrical, plumbing, curb cut, heating, et cetera. Any one of them is perhaps proper, perhaps well intentioned, but it's a maze. Why don't people build in the city of Erie? I just told you three or four, five reasons. It's a hell of a lot easier to build somewhere else. And in the broader sense, investment must be incentivized. If the market isn't working, you've got to turn the dial somewhere. Lurda does that in a big way, but there's still a lot of obstacles to not cause the private sector to build on those many, many lots that exist today and are being created by a good blight program and a good demolition program. For my last minute or two, I'm just going to talk about real quick a couple of things about the ordinance. Section 5, it really doesn't, it talks about code violations. Well, here's the problem with that section. Every, virtually every property once I own, live in, hesitate to say perhaps one you own, live in, has a code violation. So if you have a code violation to tenant, then can say, it terrains the property site and prevent the lease from being terminated. But every property has a code violation. I can almost guarantee it. That's just the nature of the beast, and this is going to be a problem. You put that power in front of the tenant, say you got this code violation, because, like I said, almost everybody does. Section 6, it doesn't define who is a survivor of domestic violence. Don't let the courts decide what that is. You know, put that into your ordinance. I'm not sure why just cause ordinance gets into 60 days notice, but 30 is a reasonable notice for my customer, and I would always give them the least laugh. 60, that's just too long, but it's not the end of the world. But eviction during a terminated lease, this is, this section 9 does not seem to allow one to evict, say if I had a vacant sale clause. I know, and so many agreements made hold that. Right now, then, you know, a tenant could hold up a sale because they're not going to leave because this section doesn't allow that. That is, I'm specifically talking about section 9. And I sent that to this listener, and he, you know, he's doing what he's planning to do with it, I guess. 10 more seconds. Penalties at 12. Who imposes this fine of 100,000? What's the criteria? What's the appeal proceeding? That's it.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Good day.
Good evening, council and mayor Joe. My name is Kathy Schaff, and I too am a lifelong Erie resident. I am here today to say congratulations to anyone involved with what I just saw on the evening news with those small mini homes that went up, and there was a big ribbon cutting today, and I'm very excited for that. I would like to try to fundraise for more of those homes to be built. That would be awesome. I also want to say that I am for the ordinance amending the streets and sidewalks. And I do not belong to a gym. My husband and I walk for our exercise. That's one thing that we love to do together. And since we work during the day, we are now into evening walking when the weather permits. And it's dangerous out there. There's a lot of sidewalks that are broken up, so I have to hang on to my husband since I learned my lesson this spring and tripped on a sidewalk that was uplifted. So I am very much for anything to help the pedestrians out. Another thing is I think we need more streetlights. It's dark out there. And if I were walking by myself, and it's just early evening, I mean, 7 o'clock, it's dark now. So I'm for more streetlights, better pedestrian safety. And I'm noticing a lot of things today down the block. They put up a new street pole a block away because someone had hit it. And then on 38th Street, a few blocks down, they put up another pole today. And then last week, my husband's business had a pole hit in front of his place of operation, and that happens a lot where they have to replace a pole because the cars going east sometimes aren't mindful of the trucks that are pulling into their driveway. But another thing, too, about sidewalks is I've noticed that the large construction vehicles that tear down the homes are causing sidewalk problems. And there's this one in particular where my husband and I walk that got torn down because there was a fire there. And the sidewalk is just completely broken up and still has sidewalk chunks laying there during the pedestrian sidewalk area. And there was, I don't know if it's still there, but I almost tripped over a sign by the Pontiac Field that was on the sidewalk. And you just have to really be careful. And now that it's really dark in the morning and at night, we need to be mindful. When I moved into my house in 1987, people used to stop at the stop sign. I have a driveway and a stop sign on either side of my driveway on the other side of the street. And people aren't as polite anymore, unfortunately. I mean, I do have the wonderful people in my neighborhood that do stop. But there is a lot of frustrated drivers out there who are just out for themselves, and you really do have to be careful. So again, I am supportive of the sidewalk issue. Thank you.
My name is Dave Burrows. I live in the 16503 zip code area. And my assistant there has passed me out a problem with the ongoing issue for nine years with the collection of the sewer water and garbage bills here in the city. The first copy is in Westleville, Lawrence Park, Harbor Creek, Mel Creek. The sewer water is on one bill. The city pays the water authority conservatively $100,000 a year for extra billing of the public. And there's no, there's really no excuse for that, really. And I believe it was mentioned in the last couple of days to several people. And I think the mayor, mayor was talking to somebody the other day about it too as well. And so I'd like you people to look into it. If you, if you get your water shut off, two weeks later, they shut your water off again because your sewer and garbage billing paid. But having it on one bill, you make arrangements to pay it so people won't lose their water and sewer and garbage, well, water bill, because you can't lose your sewer and garbage. But they won't lose their water bill because they're able to make a payment on one bill instead of two bills. And I just wanted to bring it to attention because the contract up, I believe, is up to December 31st of this year with the water authority in the city. From what I understand, that would have to be verified by you folks. But that's all I have to mention for right now, and the fact that they're tearing these houses down. I had a contractor from Buffalo that looked at a house at 533 East 13th Street. And he put a bit, he won a bid on it. He looked at it, got a price on building, fixing the foundation, and the structure was good. Like the bones were good. But if you tear that house down, you can't put nothing on it. It gets taken off the tax record because it's too close to other houses. But if you rebuild it, you're saving $30,000 or $40,000 just in having the sewer water and stuff hooked up to it. So all you have to do is the cosmetics of them. And the one I was looking at, 533 13th Street, a city employee told me that she looked at it and the construction, the basement, foundation was bad. It was bad. That's why I had a contractor come and give us an estimate from this businessman out in Buffalo that wants to build houses, fix half the houses in Erie. But once you tear it down, it's worthless. You get 20, the city collects $20 a month or your taxes on it. That's all I have to say for right now. I appreciate if you could look into that problem with the sewer garbage and water bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cole Shenley, and I live in the city of Erie. I don't have a lot to say tonight. I just wanted to hopefully congratulate all of you for passing these ordinances tonight. I think the rental one is long overdue, and I'm excited to see that pass. And I'm also excited to see the sidewalk issue finally being taken on by this council. I know Freda has put a lot of effort into trying to convince you guys to do something about it, and I think it's great that you're finally tackling it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening, Natalie Miller, by the way. I'm here to discuss the ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances for the city of Erie, Part 3, by adding Article 354 rental housing. I'm focused specifically on Section 4 definitions, specifically letter D. The definition of eviction, as it stands, you have written eviction, and is any conduct, action, or legal proceeding to remove a tenant or occupant from or otherwise recover possession of a rental premises. So this definition as it stands is very broad, and I want to be very respectful here because I can tell you guys have put a lot of time into this, and I appreciate that. And I especially appreciate the efforts to protect victims of domestic violence. So I want to be respectful, but also just point out that this definition as it stands actually points to a variety of scenarios that aren't necessarily an eviction. So for example, an eviction is a very specific legal process whereby a judge writes an order of an eviction. So in this definition, when it says otherwise recover possession, that could refer to a tenant simply moving out. This happens often at the end of a lease. For example, their lease ends, they decide to move out and move somewhere else. By default, the landlord recovers possession. So I'm just seeking clarity of language here. I can give a number of examples of how that happens of tenants decide to move somewhere else, but none of those refer to an eviction. So my recommendation is to remove the two phrases, otherwise recover possession and any conduct at the start of your definition. These are vague and unspecified. So I have looked up a couple of other definitions with more precise language. Firstly, from Uriam Webster, eviction is the dispossession of a tenant of leased property by force or especially by legal process. Here's another one that I think is actually more concise. An eviction is the court-ordered removal of a tenant from the property where they reside. I think that one is perhaps clearer. An eviction is the court-ordered removal of a tenant from the property where they reside. So I would hope you guys would take some time to consider this so that when the ordinance is passed, it has a proper definition that refers to what I think you want it to refer to. I think you're actually trying to refer to evictions, and maybe you're not realizing that this actually refers to a variety of scenarios of the tenant's choosing. So I certainly mean no offense to the hard work you guys are doing. I'm just seeking precise language and clarification, especially related to this definition. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other? No.
I was debating. My name is Donald Crenshaw. I'm a resident here at Erie, Pennsylvania. I think most of you know me, and one of the things that I'm very passionate about is trying to make a difference in my community. 19th and Parade, 80 something units of affordable housing has been built with no assistance from the city of Erie. Not $1, mayor. 80 units. I've taken it on myself to rehab the units that's in Erie that I own to create homeownership. I got five on Buffalo Road right now for homeownership. We renovated them. I stopped renting them five years ago, but I've been being charged for rental registration fee when they weren't being rented. It strictly says, gone to court three times. The courts have said you're right on, but we still fight. Council members, my father told me, "Son, you may give out, but never give up." I'm tired. Tired. Redevelopment Authority took a house, put it on the blight list. Actually, last, two weeks ago, they took all my properties, put them on the blight list. We had some meetings, met with the land bank, said, "Listen, just let me fix them up. Give us time." 22nd Street took out a building permit in December 2021. Building permit. It's on the window. It's on the window. Met with the city and said, "Here, I'll fix the house up. We've always said that. It can be homeownership." I went and took a plumbing permit out two weeks ago. Didn't have one prior. Took electrical permit out two weeks ago. All the permits have been taken out. I started putting the building back into a position where we could either rent it or sell it, preferably sell it for homeownership. Monday, I had a stop work order stuck on the window. You don't have proper permits. You go up there right now, building permit's there. You issued it, city. Well, you issued it done too long ago. Per the code, building permit lasts for five years. Check the code. Five years. Well, you didn't do anything in the time period in which it can expire. Well, when did it expire? When did I get a code violation to even get it on a blight list? But I did. They supposedly went in and took it. We've been to court. We have one that the judge hasn't ruled on in a few months now about who owns it. They took it. I paid all the taxes. It's one block from an $8 million project that council again approved for us to build because they allowed me a chance. But like I said, council, I'm tired. Man shouldn't have to fight the way I'm fighting. I was served from fifth floor today, another document, eight pages of supposedly violations. For what reason? Stuff going back to 2021, COVID. Well, you didn't certify the tenant properly. Well, we weren't bringing people in in 2021 to verify things. Some people moved out. Well, that's not acceptable. You're in violation. Counsel, I ask you, look up what's going on in the city. We're taking properties and fixing them up. You're going to see us fix up a lot more houses. But as the man said, instead of spending $20,000 to tear down a building, all the homeless that's out there, nuts needed. Give the people that $20,000 for homeownership. Minority homeownership is 2% in this city. And if you look at all the houses that's being tore down right now and taken, how many of them are owned by minority versus others? Mayor, I ask you, look into that. Ask the right questions. Why is properties all over the city being taken and blighted that could be fixed up? Well, it's not worthwhile fixing up. I can tell you, 33rd Street, they said it was on the blight list. Well, it was. I owned it. I went in and fixed it up, sold it to a doctor. But it was blight. It should have been tore down. 22nd Street, you give me another month and go look at it. It'll be fixed up. Now, I hope there's not a retaliation after tonight because it seems like every time I make a comment or a statement, I catch the dickens. So I ask all of you to look into this, do the right thing. We're here to fix up housing, train young men, give them an opportunity to better themselves. I was one of those men that lived in the projects, grew up. You had a minority requirement because all the work out here that's going on on State Street, just to let everybody know, I was the minority, and I put a lot of it in. But it's a shame that the kids now don't have that opportunity because there's nothing being enforced for minority participation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw. Do we have any other public comment? Do we have any other public comment? Do we have any other public comment? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council File Number 16390, official ordinance 652023, appropriating the sum of $325,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof from the Department of Justice, COPS, Bomb Squad, Regional Response Vehicle. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Rosinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16390, and now known as Official File Ordinance 652023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Rosinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 652023, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16391, an ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part III, Title III, Business Regulation, by adding Article 354 Rental Housing, establishing the rights and obligations of the owners and occupants of rental housing in the city of Erie.
Discussion. Mr. Betson.
Who's wearing, one of the people in public comment had asked for some clarification. I remember we had a long discussion, but I don't feel confident reiterating that discussion myself about the definition of eviction. Can you clarify for me what the reasoning behind that definition was? Because I know it was kicked around a lot through the process.
Well, that definition has gone through somewhat of a tortured history, but I mean, the comments from the young women raising the issue, I don't oppose those proposed revisions. I don't know that it necessarily makes an impact. If the definition of eviction is broad, it still is that you can't evict someone against our rules. And so if somebody were to leave voluntarily, even if that were somehow to be deemed to be by a broad reading of the term, it wouldn't apply because nobody's evicting somebody in violation of the rules. So I don't think that the need is pressing to change that definition. That being said, I don't disagree with her comments, and I wouldn't have an objection to changing that definition as she proposed.
Would it be wise to maybe table this until it gets straightened out?
I don't think one definition is necessary for that. I'm comfortable with amending it to, let's see, what was the second definition, of court-ordered removal of tenant? But we have gone back and forth with both our own city solicitors, other housing-specific lawyers around the definition of it and settled upon that. And so I'm happy to amend that slightly, but I, especially given the fact of how many months we've been working on this, to table it over one definition would be slightly absurd.
Can you repeat that phrase used, Ms. Faulkner?
It's court-ordered removal of tenant.
Yeah, so why don't we just add that phraseology to the current phrase? In that way, everything stays in place.
Mr. Betson, you said that's comfortable.
I don't have an objection to that if that's the wish of council. And I will also find out that Mr. Kanaček also raised some issues. And as a practical matter, I mean, I do think this is going to be a learning process as to, is it good? Is it not good? Does it create problems? As long as you're open to amending it to address concerns as they arise, I'm all right with the ordinance as it's drafted, but I have no objection to that, Mr. Keys' proposal to amend the definition as suggested by the public.
Yeah, I felt like through the process, there was a lot with the apartment association and stuff that addressed many of the things that Mr. Kanaček had brought up to us. I feel pretty confident with his points, but that one definition spot was something where we'd kicked around and hadn't been quite settled on it.
This was a, there were dramatically different views, as many council members know. And this, when I said tortured, I don't mean that in any way disrespectful, but there were very strong beliefs that certain things needed to be in the ordinance, and people opposed to that and vice versa. And to be able to get this version where both sides, people who were taking it from an extreme position, trying to protect renters, and taking it from an extreme position, trying to protect landlords, both legitimate positions, when both sides seem to say, "I think this works," that's why I'm just hesitant to say we can change a number of things without getting further input. But I don't think that that definition, whether it be broad or strict, is going to affect it. And I tend to like the simplicity of a shorter definition if you're comfortable with it.
Lori, what is the line there? Is it on that ordinance? Do you have it? Is it G or something like that with the definition?
D, eviction, any conduct, action, or legal proceeding to remove a tenant or occupant from or otherwise recover possession of rental premises.
Court-ordered removal? It does not. It specifies removal.
Question, how different is this from the tenant law that's on the books already?
Yeah, the state law is very, we have very little that we've changed from, you know, there's, state law is very comprehensive. This reiterates it so that they can see it in one central spot.
Right, okay.
All right. I'll, so can I make a motion then to add court-ordered removal of tenant?
So you're making a motion to approve the ordinance with that revision?
Yes.
You can do that.
I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Call for vote.
Okay, just want to get the wording right. An eviction is any conduct, action...
No, an eviction would be any court-ordered removal of a tenant from a property in which they reside.
Somehow, the definition that we had for simplicity actually got shorter with our amendment.
What's that?
The definition we had of simplicity actually got shorter with the amendment.
Yeah.
So court-ordered removal of a tenant of a property in which they reside?
Yes.
All right. Lori, you have it?
Well, I have the solicitor there. Is there a solicitor?
Yes.
Question for you.
Okay.
So within the context of how the legal process is in the state of Pennsylvania or in Erie County, so we know that, you know, that eventually a judge does decide, but I think in the longer definition, it talks about the actions and whatever, you know, which all is considered an eviction, you know, it's probably a de facto eviction, you know, for those other reasons. But ultimately, it is the possession, court-ordered possession. But my question was, even though that's the end result, is the physical repossession, notice or filing of it could be for those other reasons? So that was, my question to you was, does that make a difference? And is that why the different other things were mentioned in the ordinance?
Most likely. I think that, again, the bad act, let's say that I'm going to kick somebody out of their apartment or their rental unit because they are the victim of domestic violence. We're saying in our ordinance that that's not permitted. That's not a legitimate reason. And so the more narrow you define eviction, then the fewer the potential violations. The broader the definition, you are correct, Mr. Keys, there may be a reason in having it be broad. I inherited that definition, and we dealt with it and made some changes, but it is broad, and I can't, since I didn't write it, I can't say what the intent was. But I suspect the intent was to try to be much more, a much broader perspective and be more, in essence, protective of the tenant. The concern from the speaker is that there could be potentially absurd interpretations of that. That is a risk. And so a more narrow definition makes it simpler, easier, but it may lead to an occurrence where somebody is somehow potentially victimized, and it doesn't technically fit under the more narrow definition of eviction.
Is there any other discussion? So we would be moving forward with the amended ordinance in the definition? Does that have a call for vote?
Do we have to read the motion to amend and then read it as amended?
I think you would just say that we have a motion to approve the ordinance.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
And then take the vote and see if it passes.
Okay. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance 16391, and now known as Official File Ordinance 662023, be finally passed by City Council as amended. Mr. Rosinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 662023, finally by yea six, nay zero. Moving on to the next ordinance. Council File Number 16392, official ordinance 672023, an ordinance amending the following sections of Article 112 Rule of Council, and more specifically 11201, meetings 11202, place of meetings 11205, meetings open to the public 11210, order of business 11211, president of council 11212, permanent standing committee liaison chairperson, and 11215, review of the budget. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16392, and now known as Official File Ordinance 672023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Rosinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council passes Official File Ordinance 672023, finally by yea six, nay zero. As amended. We amended the time of the...
If anyone read the ordinance for rules of council ahead of time, we did change the evening meetings. They will start at 6:30 next year instead of 7:00, or as 7:30 is today. So you guys will get an hour, get to bed an hour earlier if you do this again next year. Yeah, yeah. So rules of council, there was a few things that happened in the course of, that were changed, a lot of which was to make it more accessible to the public. One thing is that our evening meetings, starting at 7:30, is not always accessible. We have moved the finance meetings. We get here at 6:30. We agreed that we could probably get here at 6:00, but then we shifted the finance meetings, so that gave us another half an hour. We'll do those after the morning meetings moving forward instead of before the evening meetings. Should save us money on security and should help our administrative support for the finance meetings do it within their workday, as well as making it more accessible to the public. So that's what was amended on it.
Council File Number 16393, official ordinance 682023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are from the federal grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores... The council file ordinance bill number 16393 and now known as official file ordinance 682023 be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 682023 finally by yea six, nay zero.
Moving on to ordinances for first reading?
Council file number 16394, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $112,950 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Program. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance number 16394 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16394 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16395, an ordinance vacating the right-of-way of an improved, an unimproved alley on the southeast corner of the intersection of West 20th Street and Plum Street by Justin Crey of CT Consultants on behalf of Leon Construction. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance number 16395 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16395 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16396, an ordinance amending Article 71901, Streets and Sidewalks and more specifically adding Section 71911, Construction Closures of Sidewalks to ensure the public safety of pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic when sidewalks are closed due to construction, redevelopment, and/or repairs.
Mr. President?
Discussion?
Go ahead. You have a question when you're done. May I speak or are you still done?
Go ahead, it's discussion.
My only question on this is how are we going to enforce it? I know that the people we have in enforcement now are overloaded with everything that they're trying to do. People talk about blighted properties and they get no answers. People talk about trees being cut down.
This will be on the front end. So this will be in the application to do the construction. You'll have to show how you're going to provide safe access for pedestrians still.
No, I understand that, I'm saying how, what happens if they don't do it?
Oh, that's, that's, that's Mr. Schember's problem, not ours. We just have the budget to make sure he can.
Joe can handle it.
Executive branch problems, we just provide the legislation.
Maybe we ought to look at getting, uh, more people in code enforcement. I know they're working pretty hard. That's all I get.
Okay. Sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Nelson. The council file ordinance number 16396 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16396 by yea six, nay zero on first reading.
Moving on to new business, I make a motion to move the balance.
Motion to move the balance? She seconded it before I did it.
No, I motioned it.
Oh, you did?
I motioned, I seconded.
President's not supposed to do that, but that's okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Any separation?
I thought I was just doing Mel's job, I was, I thought I was vowing it over to you and then she intercepted.
You're the man, Rock, good job.
Any separations?
Now, call for vote.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, and Mr. Nelson.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, from the floor to waive rules. I'll need a super majority to do that. And my intent is to introduce a resolution for the mayor reappointing, uh, Ben Wilson to the EMTA.
I'll second your motion.
Call for the vote to waive rules.
Voting to waive the rules, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Resolution sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. Receiving the communication from Mayor Joe Schember reappointing Ben Wilson to the EMTA, the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority for a five-year term expiring October 22nd, 2028. City council receives and confirms. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea six, nay zero.
Moving on to committee reports. Are there any volunteers to start? Mr. Brzezinski.
I'll start. No report today.
All right. We had a blighted property, um, meeting on October 11th and at that meeting they went over the old business, which was 15 properties added, three properties being rescinded. And then as of the meeting, they had 244 blighted properties remaining on the list. And as of the 2023 judicial state tax sale, we will have six properties from inside, no, 53 properties located within the city limits. And six of them are additional and under intention by the redevelopment, so more likely they're going to claim them. Um, we have a EMTA Zoom meeting coming up on October 23rd at 4:00 PM. If you would like to participate in that, they do ask that you reach out through email and get a Zoom linked email to you. Those are public meetings, so if there's issues with the bus that you think need to be addressed to accommodate our community, please participate in that. And as well with the blighted property, um, review board, they ask that you register through Zoom so you can participate as well. Those are held on the second Wednesday of every month. And then the EMTA meeting is the fourth Monday of every month. That is all I have to report.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah, uh, last week I attended the redevelopment authority's meeting. Just wanted to look in and see, uh, where they were making progress, uh, with, uh, their, their programs. Uh, they are making some progress. Um, there are, you know, uh, there are still some problems, but I, hopefully, uh, uh, they'll be working through them. And, uh, it's just, uh, my hope that, you know, with the funds that were allocated, the most people received the help. That's it.
Mr. Troop?
Mr. President, no, no report today.
Ms. Faulkner?
Okay, um, uh, for my public ser, public safety duties, um, I met with the police chief, uh, two weeks ago. Um, last week there were slightly less calls for service, 1,086 calls for service to our police department. Um, also in good news, in the last two weeks, there have been no persons shot, uh, in the city of Erie. Uh, we also discussed public safety preparations for the total solar eclipse coming up on April 8th, 2024. Our city is expected to grow by upwards of 200,000 visitors, uh, which includes a lot of public safety concerns. Um, and I'm in the process of scheduling a ride along as well with the police department. Uh, yesterday I attended the sewer authority. Uh, things are moving along well with their capital improvement projects. Uh, and also attending the water authority meeting tomorrow. Um, I missed the ribbon cutting of the new facility on Monday, but that has been in process for almost 20 years now. And I believe a hundred million dollars invested into that. So that is a huge feat for that to be done. Um, but I want to spend the rest of my, uh, committee report, um, talking about an additional housing issue. Um, so I thank my fellow council members for their votes on the rental housing unit. Um, I am speaking, um, as a representative, but also as a champion for several neighborhood watch leaders. Um, this involves the Central City Neighborhood Watch, the Central Peach Neighborhood Watch, the East Ave, Hess Ave Neighborhood Watch, as well as the East Bayfront Neighborhood Watch. Um, this is a letter to the mayor as well as to all members of council, which I will distribute. Um, I want to draw attention to the public as well. Um, back in May, a right-to-know request was submitted, which is something any member of the public can do. Uh, and this was a request by these neighborhood watch leaders about the city's rental license program. Essentially, they wanted to understand who were the property owners, uh, who were the problem landlords, um, and, and whatnot, to best be involved and, uh, provide support to their community. Uh, the list was for each rental unit in the city by address, owner information, and the latest inspection, because so often we know that inspections are meant to happen and sometimes they don't. Um, the city did technically complete the right-to-know request. Um, the document, however, was unreadable. Uh, it was a 1,600-page PDF document, uh, which was not able to be sorted or really read, quite frankly. Um, the data is itself in an Excel spreadsheet and they requested that it be provided as an Excel spreadsheet. Um, this has gone so far to the appeals process at the state for this right-to-know request. Um, and quite frankly, this is a huge setback in terms of government transparency, um, and an infringement on people's rights to know important public information. So I will share this letter, uh, but I really urge Mayor Schember to take action on this, provide this right-to-know request in an Excel format. I'm, I'm speaking, this is, these are major community leaders, Paul Gamble, Pastor Matthew Judge, Father Jerry Persicchio, Del Birch. Um, this letter is on behalf of all of them. So if we can please get that right-to-know request to them in an Excel format so that they can do their great work on their neighborhood watches, that would be most appreciated. It was for, it's all outlined in the letter, um, but it was for a list of each rental unit in the city by address, owner information, and latest inspection date for each unit, which is all perfectly, uh, acceptable information for a right-to-know request.
All right. My report, which, uh, you know, Mr. Brzezinski said he had no report. I've been to three meetings with him since last council meeting. The Port Authority that we keep having all those meetings with, those have all been in the last couple of weeks. So I want to highlight that for the public. If you go on the Port, uh, Port Authority's website, there is a frequently asked questions document available for their, uh, potential work with the Erie County Redevelopment Authority. They're having a public meeting at East Middle School on October 23rd where they will take public comments and input. Um, so I would highly recommend everyone keeping up to speed on that. It's, um, it's going to be, uh, quite an opportunity for our community to get federal and state help to remediate that work. Uh, and something that at this point I expect to be retired by the time it has any, uh, profitable use. But, uh, you know, I think, I think I might get to enjoy it in retirement. Sorry, I don't recall the time off. It's in the, October 23rd in the evening at East Middle School. I think it was 6:00 or 6:30, it's on the Port Authority website. 6:00, yes, at the same time.
Just to piggyback on that, Prez, uh, we both know that, uh, Erie Coke walked away from us and left a mere swamp debris. Yeah, it's, it's a dirty, dirty place. If we can pull off what we're talking about doing, we can qualify for superfunds, which still takes 20 years to clean the place up. I didn't know it was that bad when I grew up down there. But we, we played there pretty much all summer, golf tanks, the whole bit. Uh, maybe that's why my mom died of cancer when she was in her 50s. A lot of folks in that, those neighborhoods had that situation. Uh, it needs to be fixed. And that's what we're going to try to do with that. Thank you.
Yeah. So Mr. Brzezinski and I have had two or three meetings in the last two weeks in regards to that, to be updated on it. It's really, I think, promising opportunity to, to see a bad thing erased. Um, you know, as we've had the update to the tenants', um, rights, we had quality of life, we've had rental registration. I was, uh, and the big question that keeps being asked, how is this going to be enforced? That's really the, uh, that's one of the things that both sides keeps asking. Where are we going to see consistency on these definitions? How are we going to define the domestic abuse situations? You know, what are we going to leave this up to? And I want to remind, um, the public and the administration and council that, uh, in our comprehensive plan in 2016, uh, it suggested a housing court. And that was considered the easy thing to do. They expected that it was really the first thing we could get done and that would be done in 2017. Um, and I think that was before all of us were in office, uh, that are here today. Uh, Mel was here for it, but he's out with surgery. Um, so you know, that's something that as we hit budget season, I know the intermunicipality work with it would be most beneficial. Um, I know that, uh, Wesleyville Borough had discussed it at their last council meeting. Um, you know, that's a, that's a position that I think it, it's, it'll pay itself back. Um, we just had a house on my block that has been vacant for 12 years. It inspired the vacancy registration, I'll be frank about that, it's just because of the one guy. Um, it's fallen into blight, it's fallen into disrepair. We have, uh, people squatting in there that, uh, have been using the garage for all sorts of fun that my 90-year-old neighbor calls me about. And, uh, and it just went to trial to determine valuation and got a continuance of another month. So it's, um, you know, when, when we look at these issues of blight, when we look at, I, I can show you our docket of legislation this year. I think we've been crushing it. Rental reg, rental rights today, uh, there's been a docket of stuff to, to address blight. Um, I can't even blame it on the executive branch when we look at division of powers. I think you're doing all right there. I'm not going to, I'm not even going to blame it on you. But if, if we don't get the, the judicial branch resourced correctly, then we're going to continue to see these problems. And the fact that it hasn't been redressed yet after the comprehensive plan expected to be done within a year, uh, is something that I would love to work legislative branch budgeting with the executive branch to get done in the kind of order that the comprehensive plan seemed to think we could get it done in. And then the judicial branch would be lined up with us? And then I'd have no one to blame but you, Mayor. And whatever legislation we failed to pass. So anyways, that's it for my report. Uh, on to solicitor. No?
I have nothing, I'm sorry, I have nothing.
Mayor Schember.
I'll be, I'll be brief also, but, uh, attended the grand opening of three tiny homes at Fury Shelter Services today. And that was incredible and there were $15,000 each is what they cost. And they're trying to raise more money to, to do more of them. And they had three groups there that were going to live in these homes. So it was, and they took, they gave them the keys as, as a conclusion to the ceremony. I also attended on Monday the dedication of the, uh, we like, uh, water plant, uh, which, uh, $80 million have been invested in that over the last almost 20 years. And it's totally redone now, I had a tour of the inside, it's really incredible. Uh, the great quality water that that's going to provide to our residents for decades to come. Uh, we've been very busy, my team and I, uh, getting next year's budget ready for you guys to look at shortly here. And it's going to be, uh, still very busy at least another week or so until we have it all ready. Went to the Manufacturers and Business Association's 118th Annual Event last week. Sully Sullenberger spoke at that, were any of you there? Can't remember. Uh, it was, it was a very good event, a lot of, a lot of people there. Uh, and, uh, the presentation was very interesting about what he went through. Uh, and the last thing I want to mention is it was Luther Manus' 96th birthday back on October 10th. And they had a little celebration in front of his Sonoco that he started there on, uh, East 12th. And we had a great celebration and wish him well. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that, meetings adjourned.
City council adjourns at 8:35 PM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner.